Getting into the school committee meeting for December 13th, 2023. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. This is the meeting of the Town of Auburn School Committee is being conducted both in person and remotely, consistent with Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022, which suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members are allowed to participate remotely as long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of this meeting. All supporting materials that have been provided to the members of this body is also available on the town's website. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. Please note that this meeting is being recorded by the Auburn Cable Television. Thank you. If we could all stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The vision of the Auburn Public Schools is to educate and prepare students for the opportunities and challenges of a changing world. We will create, maintain, and support an environment that fosters a sense of belonging for all students in our schools, respecting race, color, sex, religion, national origin, sexual orientation, gender identity, homelessness, poverty, spoken language, and ability.
Okay, thank you, Meg. All right, we'll start out with special recognitions. Oh, I'm sorry. Is there anyone here for citizens comments? Seeing none, okay, we'll go to special recognitions.
Very good. Thank you, Madam Chair. So this evening, we'd like to recognize the 2023 Fall Swickle All-Stars. They were all invited to come, but many are still participating in sports now that the winter season has begun. So just to give them all a little shout out, that's John Rocheford for All-Stars for Boys Golf, Trevor Omero for Boys Golf, Anthony Casillo, All-Star Boys Golf for Second Team, Logan Mulcahy, the same, Emma Ellis and Emily Hunter, All-Star Girls Cross Country, First and Second Team, Natalie Frazier and Molly Hilditch for Girls Soccer, along with Zunay Molten, Omar Abu-Lael for Boys Soccer, Nick Almeida, Boys Soccer, Alex Merkandante and James Almeida for Soccer, Gianna Candelaria, Maya Tatum and Maeve Whittemore for Field Hockey. So quite an impressive list of athletes. We thank them and their families for sticking with it and going through all the training and everything they've had to, but really an impressive list of athletes.
Yeah, that's awesome. Great job to all of them. Any comments or anything from the noon? All right. Seek approval for, to accept the minutes from November 29th, 2023?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes on November 29th, 2023.
Second. Hey, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There's a vote, and I will turn it over to you, Dr. Chamberlain, for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We're actually going to begin with the first topic under New Business, the Body-Worn Cameras. We have a guest hearing in case we have any questions related to this. Chief Mills is here with us this evening. In your packet, you will find a memorandum of understanding that he and I, along with Chief Lemon, have collaborated on. So the Auburn Police Department, starting in January, will be issuing body-worn cameras to all of their patrolmen. And you can correct me if I say anything incorrect. And so our two SROs are still considered to be patrolmen for the Auburn Police Department, and thus they will also be issued a body-worn camera. In doing some research around this with other school districts, there are very few that have a policy on this, but I did, I did find one that has it. Because what's the concern, right? Student privacy and staff privacy. The Auburn Police Department's been very gracious in what they've collaborated with us on. Basically, it works out that these would only be employed in the event of a very serious offense, something that would require police intervention. So God forbid, in the event there was someone that were to come to the building with some kind of a weapon, right, trying to get in, something like that. They would use the camera then, as they should. But let's say it's something typical, which does not happen very often, but in the event there were a fight at Auburn High School, which really doesn't happen often, but if there were, that's a disciplinary issue. In that case, the camera would not be turned on. And they do have to be turned on to be used. I think there's a button at the top. Okay. And there's a light that goes on when it is turned on. So if you were looking at them, you would know that the camera is on when they would be using it. The memorandum of understanding also gives me, as the superintendent, access to any of the footage at any time. We would certainly collaborate for the release of any footage, but I don't think there would be any need to do that unless it was statutorily required or required because of an investigation. So if there was something that led to some kind of police proceeding, then we may have to release that. But, you know, I am welcome to take any questions, and certainly Acting Chief Mills would be happy to do the same. So I don't know if anyone has any questions or concerns about... And I do think it's the beginning of January, mid-January?
Right, the go-live date's January 3rd.
Okay.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions?
Through the chair, I have a comment, not a question.
Yeah, go for it.
I think, I mean, we're at times where I think it is absolutely necessary, and I think it needs to be done. And it's unfortunate that we're at this point, but for your safety, for the kids' safety, for the staff's safety, I think it's needed.
Yeah, I agree. My only concern is starting the body cameras before we have a policy that's passed and that we can use. So timing-wise, that is a concern to me. Is there a way we could push it off until we can get this?
Yeah, so what we could do, and this is, we can talk about this too. So our next meeting is January 3rd, I think, right?
Yeah.
So would that be time for the committee to review this policy and make a final decision?
Yeah. And we don't need to do three readings of it? I didn't know if that was...
Well, this really is, this is, this is actually a memorandum of understanding, not an actual school committee policy. It's a, it's an agreement with the Auburn Police Department. So I think we can move forward with that.
Okay. Yeah, that would be ideal, I think. Let's just make sure we have a concrete thing set up before.
Actually, we have January, January 2nd, right? So we come back to school on the 3rd. So if we could maybe start on the 4th, once the committee looks at it on the 3rd.
Can extend a day?
Yeah, okay.
That one day. Okay, great. Well, I think it's, yeah, unfortunate, but it is a great thing, you know, and necessary in this day and age, so. There are no more questions.
Any comments you'd like to share with the, with the committee?
No, just, you know, we appreciate the collaboration, the teamwork that we've had, and the schools were...
Can you walk up to the mic?
You know, we do appreciate the relationship that we do have with the schools and, you know, the SRO program, the chief values it. You know, he has a certain kinship with Dr. Chamberlain, for sure, because they started around the same time provisionally and then full-time. And, you know, us expanding the program from one to two SROs, necessary, definitely. And, you know, as we had discussed, and we've talked with the SROs as well, is, it would be under extremely limited circumstances that they would deploy the cameras. And they're required to issue a warning or an advisory, rather, that they're going to be deploying the cameras, starting it whenever possible. And as I explained to Dr. Chamberlain, when we had met a few times, was that, you know, if there was a significant incident, which obviously we pray there would not be, but if there was, and every other single police officer that was arriving would be rolling, you know, on their cameras. And they're gonna be issued to everyone, so from the chief all the way down. And it's, you know, it is unfortunate, but it's a kind of a two-way street as far as, you know, the need, it's an unfortunate thing that it becomes a need, but, you know, everything's based on now, you know, transparency and accountability. And it's, you know, a two-way street in the sense that it protects faculty and, you know, the students as well as the officers. And quite frankly, the school wasn't the environment that was, you know, that we were originally, you know, more, most concerned about. It was, you know, on the street and dealing with, you know, other parts of the public, not, not the students or teachers at the, at the Auburn school system or in the Auburn school system. But they are still patrol officers, and they're, you know, they're still bound by, you know, our policies. But we were definitely able to work, work out what I think is a pretty workable and, you know, livable thing for both, both sides, you know. And there was some input, obviously, from the SROs and discussing it with other school districts that have cameras, very limited amounts of footage that's actually being uploaded. So, and we, we hope that's the case with our, you know, program within the school as well.
Through the chair, the SRO has to press the button, but like, do normal patrol officers have to do that, or?
Oh, yeah, that, that's exactly, everyone has to do the same. So the, the power buttons, I'll pass them around if you want it, but the power button's on the bottom and the actual...
Okay.
So it's on, and it's not passively recording until, you know...
Okay, got it.
It records, and then there's a way for us to set the software up so we can set it back 15 seconds or 30 seconds or... But that's, we've yet to really work through those things. That'll be part of the on...
So everyone has to press the button, it just doesn't automatically...
Correct, yeah. There's no inadvertent, you know, recording or anything like that. It's, it's a pretty, you know, it's a fairly robust size. You know, you have to, you have to hit it pretty good, and press it, and you know you're depressing it. And then the, there's a noise that it makes, the aperture opens and stuff.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Yeah, and again, they do have to, as he said, they do have to verbally inform people as well if they're going to do that.
Yeah. Yeah, I think having the light on it as well is a good indicator that...
Yep. And because, you know, we are thankful that the APD provides the SROs to us, if there were another emergency in the Town of Auburn, they could be called to that too. So they have to be equipped for that. If something else were to happen, or if they came upon an accident on their way from one school to another. So it is best that they are prepared for that, I think.
One of the biggest concerns that we were able to get through was things that, you know, technically by the letter of the law is a crime, but they know, and, you know, you all know from dealing with it, that normally those things are dealt with administratively within the school. Then as far as I'm concerned, if they would not normally do, you know, seek any charges or anything like that, then, you know, then you wouldn't have to deploy the camera at that point. And it's perfectly, you know, it's easily explainable why there isn't footage if it does go to that point. And there's a mechanism in place for that if they don't record or choose not to record, so.
Great, yeah. And thank you very much for all the support you guys give to schools.
Yeah, and the collaboration and everything.
It's a great program. You know, I never did it, but, you know, starting with, I mean, going back to Jay Johnson and Brian Kennedy and, you know, now. It's nice because it just keeps growing and just keeps getting better.
Yeah, and the connection means a lot. You know, it means a lot to the adults, it means a lot to the kids.
Absolutely. They're serving lunch, they're doing, they're getting right down in there.
And field hockey.
Yeah, it's awesome.
I'm not sure there's a happier police officer in this town than Randy McCarthy right now.
I know, they put him on mashed potato duty in the kitchen.
He's a round peg in a round hole right now. We're happy. We're happy that you're happy.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
Yes, thank you.
Yep, you may go on to your next meeting.
Yeah.
Yes.
It won't be nearly as fun as this was, but yeah, good luck.
We didn't think it was fun, way more fun.
Great guy, great group of guys.
Yeah.
And women, very lucky.
Yep, indeed. All right, so we will...
I think we can resume back at the beginning.
Yep.
So the next item under unfinished business is the FY25 draft budget that was presented to you two weeks ago. And that will need to go before you on January 3rd for a vote to go on to the town. And if anyone has any questions or comments that they have related to the budget, either myself or Cecilia would be happy to answer them for you.
Any questions? No, nope, no questions. That meeting's gonna be a lot of, lot of voting. All righty.
Okay, the next item, so we've been talking a lot about field trips and what we need for a policy, the changing landscape, whether it be nationally or internationally that we face when approving such things. So in your packet, you're going to find a draft, and I'll never put that draft watermark on there again. That didn't work well, so we can send you a better copy, I can take that out. So I took some time to do some research. On MASC, they have, lots of different communities have their own policies that they've created. And so given all of the discussion that we've been having related to this, the policy before you tonight, which is, I guess it's still J.J.H. But it's the, it's the first one in your packet. It is very lengthy. It speaks about domestic travel, about fundraising. It gives some definitions and standards. There's an updated section, there should be, if I can find it, from our nurse on what we do in Auburn related to nursing policies and procedures. I would ask, I think this incorporates a lot of what we talked about the last time, about trying to stay somewhat locally, about being more thorough around transportation, about the caution that we need to share with families if we do arrange for an international trip, the fact that on any given moment that trip could be canceled based on the situation in the world. It does speak to making sure that we're not financially pressing on any of our families with what some of these trips may cost. It speaks to ratios, and I will send you a new copy because some of it's gonna be, gonna be a little tricky to see. But I do think that this may be a very good kind of pulling everything together that we've been talking about, to kind of put it all in one place. I think then it would be something that would, that we would send out to staff right off the bat so that they can see what the changes could be. But I, I would ask if you could take some time to see if this, if this speaks more to the things we've been talking about, about the caution we need to use moving forward relating, related to field trips. And then it would require a few reads of this because it would be a starting over again. But I think it would be time well, well spent if we can do that.
Agreed. Yeah, it is lengthy, but I got through it, and it hit every single point that we've all, all our concerns that we've discussed, so.
It really does, and it does, you know, kind of differentiate the different kind of trips and the consideration that should be given when a field trip is arranged, for why we're going on the trip, and what the purpose of it is, what it's for. And I think it, it may go a long way to helping us.
Agreed, definitely.
Okay, so this particular draft, we will share electronically without the watermark so that they can read through that. And then this'll just, this will be the only one that will move forward because it really does touch on the things that have been in the other two policies we looked at. Does that make sense?
Yep, yep.
So we'll do a second read on this one at the next meeting.
Great.
So there was a recommended motion for the two that was around the third read, but I think we're going to, we're not gonna do that, and we'll look at this new one.
Through the chair, I just had a quick question because I didn't get a chance to read through this whole one, but I just kind of skimmed through it. Is there a repeat and renew section for trips that we do, like consistently every year, we go to the Hanover for whatever? I didn't see a section for like the trips that we annually...
I'll have to go back and reread it for that. But even some of those, if they're going to the Hanover, those don't become, don't have to come before the committee anyway.
Like that was the one, I always see the buses lined up outside my window, so I just, you know. And then the only other thing is which nurse? Is there like a point nurse that is going to kind of look at these field trips? Or is it based on the school?
No, so, well, a little bit of both. So as far as arranging for a nurse to go on a field trip, the lead nurse makes sure that she does that. She arranges the coverage typically. But it's the school nurse that signs off and looks through the students to determine if there are any needs. Now, again, up through grade, grade five, we always have a nurse on a field trip.
Right.
After that, it's more determined by the student needs, particularly at the high school, some students, if they have an inhaler or something like that, they don't need a nurse with them to help them do that. But that's the nurse in the building that makes that decision.
Okay. Through the chair, this might be like a school thing, but what, is there anything that needs to go in here about academics? Like, so if a kid is failing five of their classes, like, do we have anything in there, or that might just be like a school level?
There is something in here related to discipline. So if a student has had some disciplinary issues that caused concern for the student to go on the field trip, the principal does have the ability to say the student can't attend.
Okay.
There is not anything connected to academic performance. I can look into that. I, I think it might be threading the needle a little bit when you talk about some special education students and that kind of thing, and determining what the cutoffs are, but I can certainly look into that.
So in my experience, if it was an academic field trip, then it was said to us that if it's academic-related, we cannot say no to a child. But more of like, the fun field trips, you know? You know, so there are certain things like...
Like one of the eighth-grade trips to an amusement park or something.
Yes, like, if a kid is failing all five of their classes because they haven't turned anything in for four months, like, should they be able to go on that? And that's really where my concern lies. Not so much, I mean, that might fall into the discipline piece, though.
Yeah, right.
Because that's work refusal.
Let me, let me, let me read through this all again, and we can certainly look at that. I think that makes sense.
I just had trouble getting through it.
I know.
I couldn't see some...
Sorry.
And then I had one other, and this might be too specific, but under where it says "Transportation Lodging and Scheduling", where it says "Parents and Guardians", I think it says "Who are also chaperones may share room with their children only", or should we say "And/or other chaperones"? Because is someone gonna pick that apart?
Oh, I don't know.
Because it says they can only share with their child, but, I mean...
So I think this is all written from the viewpoint of protecting and supporting the child, not necessarily the adults that are on the trip, kind of thing. You know, so they, they would, they work that out if they, if the chaperone share a room with the child. I think the big thing is, is they, what this is saying is that they can't stay in the room with someone else's child.
Got it, just want to make sure.
That's the key to that, yeah.
Through the chair, thank you for putting that together. That must've been a lot of work.
Yeah, that was a, that was a big one.
It was, it was a merge. I may have missed something, so, you know, I'll go back through it and make sure, but I did try to pull it all together and...
I mean, as much as I could read, because it was...
Yeah, yeah.
All right. Yeah, thank you both for doing that.
In, in your packet, the next item are high school and middle school surveys. So at, earlier this year, we had done some surveys of our elementary schools related to the transition of kids into the next school or grade and the activities that we have in place to support them. And so at the time, it was, it was asked, are we going to do this for high school and middle school? So we did, it was a little bit of a glitch, but we did do it. So for the high school, we sent a survey out to families, and we also, in, in that same group is also a survey that was completed by students because we feel like high school students can say if it helped or not. So in looking at the fam, the high school transition survey, in grade eight, they have the opportunity to visit Auburn High School, and they tour the school and all that. Folks found that very helpful. In mid-August, with the family, they're invited to high school orientation. They get their schedule and they tour the building. Again, 83.7% of the people responding said that that was also helpful. Hope I can turn the page here. And then the third question was being invited to curriculum night in September so they could follow the child's schedule, meet the administrators and guidance, and learn about the coursework. Again, 67% said that that was helpful. In looking through some of the comments that were written, just to summarize a little bit, there are some questions in there that the meetings that were held with families, the program of studies was a little bit behind the eight ball with getting into hands this past year because we pushed it to the fall. So I've already, I had it in my calendar, and I reminded Mr. DeLongchamp, they're going to work on their program of studies in early January, so it will be done. And then they're going to hold an evening event for families in late January in between sports, they can find a night, to go through the program of studies, to talk about scheduling, to talk about how that works, how, you know, every try, they don't offer every elective, right? And that seniors get first dibs on those, and then it goes down to the, to the freshmen. So to kind of provide some clarity around that, which I think, based on some of the comments that were here, I think that will be helpful from families, anyway. When we look at the student transition survey, they would like maps so that they know how to get around. So again, both, the events were very well received, but in the comments, there were several comments about needing a map to get around because it was really hard.
And lunch, yeah.
They need a better, a better explanation about the lunch blocks and how that all works, which I think we can do. And one other thing was that when they do get their tours in the fall, to just maybe have it be a little bit more detailed with a little bit more information, maybe a little bit longer, so that they can really understand. And it's kind of funny, many said maps, and then they're like, I thought I needed a map, but then I found my way, and it was not so hard, right?
Yeah.
And those are things, obviously, that we've shared with the high school staff. So we'll see what we can do about that. I do think the program of studies is that will probably come before you at the January 17th meeting, hoping that they can, and we'll get that to you early, once that's done, so you can take a look at it. There are not going to be any sweeping changes, from what I understand, this year. But then we'll have a thing, you know, once in the summertime, if new students come in, it'll just be ready to go. So more to come on that. Any questions about the high school?
Questions or comments? I don't know if it was a student or a parent said something about not many teachers being there at the event, and the kids weren't able to meet a lot of the teachers. So, I mean, is that something that can be improved on as well?
Yeah, so we are going to, we're gonna have department chairs at the meeting that they have with families, and then the department chairs also go over to the middle school to meet kids. But as far as having them all in, they do the distribution of schedules and a lot of other things. And this happens the week before school, so teachers are not normally here. So that's a little bit tricky.
Yeah, okay. All righty. Do they meet them during the, when they go during the school year?
Yes, 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 yep. And that will continue. Now, the middle school transition survey, so they do do a step-up day where they come from Swiss to the middle school, and they, they tour the school. That was very well received by families. And then in mid, mid-August, they come and they get their schedule in their iPad. Again, that was also very well received. In September, they hold a Know-Your-School Night, which again, seemingly was a positive response to that. And then there was also, back in May or June, a Family Information Night so that if parents wanted to come to ask questions about things, they could. Some of the comments spoke about some training for parents on Schoology, which I think is probably a really good idea. And even for the kids, with the use of their iPads and the emails and some of the, even Schoology for them with how that all works for them, I think there were several comments that made mention of that. And, and they did talk about, because middle school is a big transition, like, there were some people that said, well, it was only one day, and we couldn't come that day, you know? So maybe if we could figure out a couple of sessions, or maybe one morning, one afternoon the following week, that might, if somebody's on vacation, that would let them come in. So we're gonna look at that too, so they'd have more of an opportunity to get in.
Yeah, I know the middle schoolers love that schedule pickup day.
Yes, yeah, a big day.
The end of the summer, yeah.
Yep, big day. So any questions about that?
I'm just, through the chair, glad to see that my daughter's not the only one who uses IDK as a comment.
Oh, no, no, she's not the only one. I, I do appreciate, through the chair, the "Give gold bars to students and staff".
Yeah.
I like that one. I'll take a few gold bars.
Through the chair, do they, do they have an opportunity to record? Like, record something when they do these days if people aren't able to attend? Because they can only do it on that one day?
I think they did during COVID, right? They did a little virtual...
Yeah, the thing with the, yeah, and the thing with the pickup is, it's, it's a pickup. I do think that maybe the Know-Your-School Night, there might be some things there that could be recorded. And I really think we could probably get some of our more experienced students to do a little video on Schoology, right? That maybe would help, help other kids and families that could be sent out.
I'm not a big fan of like presentations or PowerPoints or whatever, but those that can't be a part of it, you know, I would rather click through a slide and go, all right, Monday and Tuesday, all right, Thursday is this, you know, so at least I can get some understanding.
The teachers do send out specific information related to classes, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Through the chair, the problem with Schoology, though, is that the student sees something different. So the staff sees something, the students see something a little bit different, and then the parents see something different as well.
Yeah.
So you really need to have like a fake parent... So you really need to have like a, a fake parent account to kind of show them.
Yep.
Um, but Schoology is one of those things, like as an educator myself, like I've, I, my students become so well versed in within the first two, within the first week or two, that the kids don't really need a tutorial on it. But the parents, like how to log in, how to access, and then what they're looking at would be very helpful. Because it is a different looking program, but it is a wonderful program.
Through the chair, I have a quick question. Um, and I don't even know if it would relate to any of this, but I have spoken to a lot of people and have noticed that the transition from fifth to sixth, when they have access to their grades at all times, they're saying that their child is getting really worked up and concerned and watching their grades and really focused on it. And I will say, I, I went through it with both my children, but, um, I am noticing a lot of comments regarding that. So I don't know if there's something we can have, like some sort of conversation with the kids, saying, it's okay, try your best.
Yeah.
Constantly watching.
Yeah, cause a lot of teachers don't even have a chance to update things in time. Yeah, so. I know, we've had those woes as well. Yeah, that's a, that's a really interesting comment.
Big, it's a big change to go from all of a sudden, you have your iPad right there and you're looking at every single one of your grades at all times.
Yeah.
Weekends, all of that. So I know that there, a lot of parents were getting concerned that their child was getting too focused.
Well, and they go from, uh, a standard spaced grading system to, to.
Real grades.
Real grades, you know, numeric grades and, and or letter grades and, um, that can be scary.
Yes.
So that's a really good, that's, I'm gonna talk, I'll talk to them about that. That's really interesting.
And through the chair, um, if you mark some, so Schoology and Power School connect directly, which is wonderful sometimes, because the only way to put in a missing assignment in Schoology, once you put in a missing assignment, it automatically marks it as a zero. And you can't change that. And the Schoology platform, while wonderful, does not really love suggestions. Um, and if you ever look at the teacher's suggestions to Schoology, there's hundreds. And most likely a teacher has already suggested something that you'd like to change, like let us set what a missing assignment is. They don't really love that suggestion. So if you put in a zero even for one assignment, it will like rip their grade downward. So, you know, teachers always have to be very well aware to tell their students, like, hey FYI, like, I just put in grades, I put in missing assignments, it's not a zero, you can make it up. So, so having that is, can be very anxiety provoking.
Mm-hmm.
And through the chair, if we're recording like Schoology, I wonder if we can record, um, like the learning management systems they use for specific classes? Um.
Like for the program, the.
Yeah, cause we don't have the book anymore that the kids come home with, so how you log into all the different classes.
How to.
That's an easy PowerPoint.
That's true. It's very easy.
It is easy to like show like, this is how you get onto this, this is how you get onto that, so. Sorry, that's the teacher in me.
That's great.
I could be your schoology expert.
All right, so moving into new business, we covered the body cameras. Uh, Chief Coleman was scheduled to come and speak with us this evening to give everyone an update on the Auburn, uh, Fire Department building project. Uh, he is unable to make it tonight, but he will come in early January to kind of provide you with that. He had been here previously when there was discussion about, uh, this property and, and all of that. So, uh, he wants to give an, an update on that. So he will be back at another time.
All right.
Uh, and the last item there is around preschool tuition. So in your packet, you're gonna find some information about our nearby programs. Um, I am asking for the committee to consider an increase to our preschool tuition. Uh, we have not raised our tuition in quite some time. And if you look at the comparison, I want to thank Jen Stanek, she took on a little project for me with pulling this information together. Um, so you'll see we have a comparison to a half-day program, which is two and a half hours and the full day program at five and a half hours. And she really did a lot of detailed work and breaking it down so that we're comparing, uh, apples to apples. And so you'll see for our half-day program, our current fee is two hundred and fifty dollars a month. Um, with the average fee at the bottom in yellow at four twenty-six fifty, and that averages nine other programs that she looked at. So that's a significant, um, was significantly lower there. Uh, if you look at the, our current cost for the full day programming is five hundred and fifty dollars. The average for the area, uh, preschool programs is six fifty-nine. Uh, and that averages thirteen programs, uh, that she was, because comparing this is difficult is every program has a different structure. Some might have a half-day program for three days, some might have it for four days. Some might have full day for three days or full day for five days. Um, so she really went through and broke it down so that we can compare this almost, um, hourly, would you say? Yes, Jen? Yeah. To the hourly, what it costs, um, in an hourly way. So again, we're significantly lower than the average of those. And keeping in mind that we do have our sliding fee scale that remains in place. So if we look at the, the next page, um, if you look at the line for twenty-two, twenty-three, the revenue we took in was three hundred and fourteen thousand, three hundred and twelve dollars. Um, and we had twenty-six free students, uh, I don't, I don't have the full enrollment for that year, but for this year, we anticipate taking in three hundred and eleven thousand with twenty students that are free with ninety-nine enrolled, so about twenty percent. Uh, if in the next year we did a fifty-dollar increase to each of the tuitions, the half-day and the full day, we would, the anticipated revenue would be three hundred and fifty-one dollar, three hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars. Um, and if next year we did a hundred-dollar increase to our preschool tuition to each of those, that would equate to three hundred and eighty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars. Um, we do use this and Cecilia can speak more specifically, but we do offset teacher salaries, support staff salaries. Um, so it really does support the program in a big way. Um, and again, you know, we continue to offer the sliding fee scale, which, um, you know, uh, Jen estimated, you know, to have twenty-five kids free or reduced, um, and what that would do, and she figured that all out. So, um, I think financially it would certainly offset some of, um, some of the costs of the preschool, which in turn helps the overall budget, um, when we can fund it that way. Um, and by keeping the sliding fee scale in place, we would continue to support any of our families who are financially, uh, struggling, um, while respecting the fact that we have a very top-notch program with DESI-trained teachers who are special educators, who are highly skilled to work with the kids in our program. Um, and, um, we, we should at least be somewhat competitive. And it, it seems to me in my estimation that we're low, um, very low. Fee-wise, yeah.
Just looking at Millbury and Grafton.
Yeah, I mean, these aren't high-end towns, you know, that she compared us to is basically our the towns around us. So it's not like we're compared to Hingham and Wellesley.
Yeah.
We are way low.
Yeah.
Through the chair, having, um, kids who went through multiple preschools, I can't say enough about the Auburn Public Preschool. Um, David, in just that COVID year where he had to leave in March, made leaps and bounds. And so I, I would be in very much support because we have the best preschool teachers.
I agree with you.
Yeah. And through the chair, like doing some basic math, but like if you did, if we do six fifty times ten and then one of the Auburn private, we're still twenty-three hundred dollars less, which is still a big saving, and that's only for ten months. So, I mean, we're definitely way below compared. I mean, I think we're only less, our public schools is lower than us that currently. So, I mean, that says a lot for the full day.
Mm-hmm.
By five bucks, less than five bucks, so.
So it sounds like we're definitely open to increasing it. I guess we just have to decide, do we want to increase fifty dollars or a hundred dollars?
Fifty dollars a month.
Fifty dollars.
Yes, that would be fifty dollars a month. Because we were looking, all of these rates on the front of what they pay monthly, the two fifty or the five fifty.
I mean, I think we get away with a hundred, honestly, but sorry, I didn't even interrupt you. Um, but yeah, open to discussion, definitely.
What would your recommendation be, the fifty or the hundred?
I, I think we are still in a very, um, responsible way, meeting the needs of our families with an increase of a hundred dollars.
Okay.
I agree.
Yep.
I agree.
Yep, I do too. Cool with that. Sure, yeah. I don't have a kid in.
Every amount will benefit our budget too.
Definitely.
No one likes to increase, but.
So compared to these other schools, we could increase by four hundred dollars and still be.
Yeah.
I mean, there's something to be said about the kids that go to our preschool. They go to kindergarten with the same kids.
Yeah.
You know, they familiar with the teachers and our system and everything, so.
We have a well-educated staff.
Yeah, we have a great staff.
Compared to other preschools that might not have that.
Well, and that could be, right? Many of them are not DESI-certified, many of them are not special educators, you know, all of that. And also our support staff, you know, we have terrific ABAs, we have solid, really committed IAs that work there too.
Yeah.
Um, so this really does help to support the programming.
Yeah, and a good facility.
Yeah.
Beautiful. And even a nurse on hand, where some preschools don't even have a nurse, so. Um, all right, well, I guess I'll seek a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the preschool tuition increase of a hundred dollars as presented by the superintendent, a hundred dollars per month.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Wonderful, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you, Jen.
Thank you, Jen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That little project of yours.
That was very good. How many kids were you seeking for placement for when you called?
Okay, um, we'll move on to the teaching and learning report, Mr. Keller.
Uh, thank you, and I will echo what everybody said about the preschool, um, spending a lot of time, uh, or as much time as I can at the preschool. We have an outstanding group of educators, uh, our nurse, um, so, um, that is appreciated certainly, uh, what everybody had to say about the preschool. Um, so I want to talk about, uh, professional development, uh, and what we've accomplished, uh, so far this year and what we're about to accomplish. So, uh, we had, as I mentioned previously, I think actually at our budget meeting, uh, we launched a professional development committee, um, this year. That's one of the things, um, that was one of Dr. Chamberlain's goals. Uh, and so we had our first meeting of staff members from across, uh, all the buildings and different disciplines. And it was an outstanding, uh, initial meeting and we are continuing with that momentum. And our goal is to look at next year, uh, and our professional development, not just next year, but long-term goals around making sure that professional development is differentiated, uh, aligned to our strategic plan, ongoing. So it's not, you know, our, our intent is to not just have one-hit wonders kind of thing in professional development, but to make sure that they're rooted in long-term goals. Uh, and that everything that we're doing around professional development is, um, aimed at school and district improvement. And, you know, one of the, uh, conversations we had is the remarkable educators that we have and, and the expertise that they have and the opportunities for them to share with one another. And so, um, that's, uh, just kind of a peek into, uh, some of the stuff that we've started doing. And, uh, our next meeting is, um, coming up in February, so I wanted to share that. Um, and then I want to talk about current and, um, upcoming professional development. So earlier today, uh, at Pakachog, we had a presenter from Safe Schools who was presenting, um, with, to, uh, Jen's staff. And last week, that same presenter was at Bryn Mar and, and the, um, the goal of that presentation is to talk to all the educators there about, um, making sure that we have safe spaces throughout the building, uh, for students, families and staff. And, um, it was very well received. Jen and I had an opportunity to chat afterwards and I was able to see, uh, uh, Landon, uh, there, the presenter, uh, who did a really nice job and engaged the, the staff in that. Um, tomorrow, we have, uh, actually in this room and at, um, and be using my office as well, uh, we have an Apple-certified teacher working with our UDL coaches, who are, um, Universal Design for Learning, as I think you know. Uh, you've heard many times, we're in year three of that, um, significant professional development, uh, effort. And so our UDL coaches throughout the district will be meeting with an Apple-certified trainer to talk about ways that we can, um, continue to utilize uh, the Apple technology and integrate that into, uh, uh, Universal Design for Learning lesson planning. So that's really exciting and, uh, and, you know, with the goal of UDL around accessibility, choice and engagement. Then on January second, uh, speaking of UDL, uh, that is our first day back, but that's a professional development day, first day for, uh, teachers. Um, we are, um, working with our technical assistants who are from the UDL organization and they'll be working at all the schools. And those people have been connecting with the principals and with UDL coaches in the buildings to, uh, make sure that teachers uh, have the opportunity to design lessons and work through the things that we're working through in, um, in our year three of that. On that same day, our counselors will be working with the Worcester County, uh, DA's office on a program called Handle With Care, which is about trauma and how best to support students who have experienced trauma. Our nurses are engaged in in-person training, uh, for advanced skills in SNAP, which is a program that, uh, our nurses, uh, utilize. Our wellness teachers, and we've talked about this here at school committee, um, there are new health and PE standards. And so, um, we are, uh, they'll be working on that. So, uh, Mr. Pratt and I are meeting, uh, later this week to talk about, uh, approaches for that day. And so the entire, um, wellness department will be working through those health and PE teachers, uh, uh, standards. And then, uh, our music teachers and our teachers are having some vertical meetings on those days in addition to, uh, some of the work in UDL. So those are the things I wanted to highlight. Of course, uh, as we continue to go through the year, I'll share more things around professional development, but I wanted to put you all in that.
All right, great. Sounds like a productive day coming up, January second.
And related to the Safe Schools visit, if I can just say, they came to Auburn High School and Middle School.
Thank you. Yes, they did come to, uh, the high school and the middle school last year, presented to both of those staffs. And then we are still in the process, uh, I've been speaking with Dr. Lopez and working on the scheduling, so they will be coming to Swanson Road as well. Um, so that is in progress. And one other thing, although it's not professional development related, but related to, um, the police department, I wanted to go back to something earlier, um, talking about Officer McCarthy and Officer O'Brien. Um, earlier this week, um, somebody from the Attorney General's Office presented at the middle school uh, around, um, technology and, and, um, safe use of phones. Um, and so Officer O'Brien was there and was part of that presentation. And so just to reiterate, um, the great partnership that, uh, the schools have with the police and, um, I wanted to mention that as well, although not focused on, um, teachers. There were teachers there in the audience and I think it's important for everybody to hear, and so it does impact, um, both what, uh, kids and what, um, uh, parent, uh, excuse me, what teachers, uh, have as well.
I think to, um, I think they're gonna offer something for families late, soon, right?
In January, yes.
So we'll be. We did last year.
Yes, last year, yep, yep.
I went to that and I was eye-opening for me.
Through the chair, will that only be open to middle school and high school, or will that be open to everyone?
We sent that out to everyone last year.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think they did like a virtual piece too.
Yeah, it was, it was all virtual.
Oh, it was all virtual, okay.
Virtual, which was another thing where I think we actually had a pretty good turnout last year.
Yes.
Uh, because it was done virtually, uh, and they have a great panel of speakers, um, and they give some, well, really troubling information, honestly. But information that we all need to be aware of to keep kids safe. Uh, so certainly, once we get that, that'll go out to families too.
Great. Yeah, after that, my kids got locked down phones. I took all kinds of apps away, so they were thrilled, but. I can't wait to do it again.
One of the most striking things of that is they said, you know, before the stranger stayed, the stranger was out in the street. Now it's the stranger. To your kids.
Yeah, it's crazy.
So frightening.
Yeah.
Well, and I, um, I, I think what, one of the things that stood out to me in the presentation to the middle school students, um, is one of the presenter that asked, presenter's asked, how many of you have, um, accepted, um, friend invitations from people you've never met and you don't know? And the majority of the hands went up in that, in that crowd. And so, you know, one of the, one of the points of that presentation was that you do not know who's on the other side of that, who's sending messages. And there's been a lot of, uh, cases in, throughout the country in Massachusetts where, um, there's been, um, somebody who is not who they say they are on the other side of that.
Yeah, that's awful. So all good information.
Yeah, disturbing, but good.
Sorry to bring us down.
Yeah.
Bring out a PowerPoint next time.
Oh, well, thank you for that report. Yeah. All right, I'll turn it over to you, Cecilia.
How can I make mine more exciting? Fireworks. Basically, um, good evening, I provided in your packet a year-to-date budget report, uh, dated December seventh for your review. And along with that, I have, um, listing of budget transfers dated December seventh, between the same series for your information and different series for which I've seen your approval. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have on those.
Any questions?
Nope.
Seeing none, um.
I'll make a motion to approve the list of transfers dated December seventh, twenty twenty-three, as presented by the business manager.
I'll second.
Hey, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. And now I've got also in, in your packet, I ha, I provided a listing of the FY twenty-four school department grant awards, um, that are received for this fiscal year. Um, the town requires us to have this annually accepted by the school committee as they are grants we receive. Um, most of them are your basic grants, the Title II A. Most of them are your basic grants, the Title II-A, the IDA-240 Grant, Early Childhood, the 262 Grant, Title I Grant, the 305, and the Title IV, which is the 309. Those are the basic grants that we usually get every year. Pretty much, they stay pretty level-funded. We might get a little bit of an increase, but we also rely heavily on those grants to offset our budget. So those are in there. And then moving down, we have some newer grants, the Homeless Emergency Support Grant that we've received to support some of the students. We have a Special Ed Program Improvement Grant that we've just received. And also, there was an Instructional Leadership Institute Grant that was received. Also, the Food Service Department got the Northeast Food Group, which was a state grant. And then we, as we normally do, we're very blessed to have the Auburn Chamber of Commerce every year supports our schools and puts out the requests for teachers to submit for mini-grants. And many of our teachers do that, and it's very well-received and the program is great. So we get monies in for them to do projects for their individual classrooms. And it's a great program, so. But I gave you what the amounts are of the approved budgets and what they're utilized for. If you have any questions, I'm more than happy to talk to you on that, or
Any questions? Nope, seeing none. Seek a motion to approve those grants.
Seek a motion to approve the listing of school department grants as presented for the 2023-2024 school year.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All righty, and we do not need executive session tonight, so I seek a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote. Thank you, everyone. Happy holidays and happy new year.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.